It just stays in an open position and you have to hit the toggle switch at the top of the door. So staff is going to be behind more on top of that. Westside Community Center meeting, Councilman Warner, Councilman Clayton and myself met with the board of the Westside Community Center to assess how the city can work with the Westside Community Center in the future. We basically have reaffirmed our commitment to the Westside Community Center and we are currently working on bringing other partners to the table. And I sent an email out earlier today regarding some of the contacts that I had made and we will be discussing them in the future. And Rita Moreno brought up the issue of escrow accounts. Currently we have fourteen escrow accounts. Fourteen escrow accounts Rita. All right, GPS system, finance department looking into various systems, all right, and current pricing number. There was an issue about a $650 chair. Actually that was two desk chairs that were ordered for the construction department. And in every year. All right, let's go back to the library, lamp post. All right, we tracked down an accident report going back to April 11th of 2011. All right, finance department is currently tracking to see if in fact the claim was made. All right, we do have some estimates for replacement lights. They tend to be high. What I'm looking at now, an estimate to do is consider replacing the one that's in front of the library now with two aluminum ones. And moving the one that's still there to another area. All right, and we'll report out for as soon as the finance department gives me more information.
I got estimates of a couple lamp posts that are very similar to the one that's there now. It's slightly different but it's very, very similar. And I gave it to Joe.
Was that the cast iron ones?
Yes.
Yeah, so much for what that Joe's given to me.
Yeah, I believe they're cast iron and they're made in someplace in Pennsylvania and they're distributed currently.
We are looking at it. I'll have more information on that. The Sunset Park digital sign, the sign is currently operational but it isn't fully repaired. The electronics technician was able to get the sign working so that we could temporarily have messages up on the board. And we have some limited ability to make changes. There continues to be a software glitch around the IT numbers. Tom is currently working on that with Horizon, trying to get these IT numbers so that we can go back on full service. Hopefully, any ideas?
I'm afraid to say anything.
Keep on going, thanks.
All right, that's all I have. Second item on your agenda, special events, wedding applications. I'm Bill Morris here.
Excuse me one second. Great that you did that.
Yeah.
Great presentation. The lanyards, are they gonna have photos or no photos?
Yes.
Okay.
This is our old IDs that we have. This councilman general has seen these. All right, this is what we had talked about. This is my old ID. Going to get the same things will be issued by the police department.
Okay, no problem. Then the police department is taking the photos?
Yes.
Okay, no, I was gonna say if not, if we had to hire a private company, the housing authority is available to do it also.
All right, that's good.
Okay. Thank you. Good, great presentation, thank you.
Yeah, so I thank you for initiating, like, that's just, that's exactly what we need, is somebody responding to requests, so thank you.
Good evening. We have four applications and requests and quite a few paying applications. The first special events application is a new event, two-two-two for fundraiser for Boys and Girls Club. It's actually a walk-in event that will take place on the boardwalk on March 22nd from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And it will be after gathering at the beer garden after that's done. They are not going to close any streets. They're going to stay on the boardwalk and then the last leg will come down on the southern side of Lake Avenue. They won't be closing any streets down. They're expecting about 400 people to show up. Any questions? The next one is the new council people, Esprit Park citizens on patrol. Every year they do a flea market in Sunset Park. And this year they're planning on doing it on April 18th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Set up a couple tables. They don't have a lot of vendors but it's a good event. And since this is a city organization, there is no charges on this one. Any questions?
Nope.
The next one, we're gonna table that one. We asked for specific information from the applicant, which is Rue Events. And unfortunately she's not able to provide us with that information at this time. So hopefully bring this up at the next council meeting. The next one after that is a fundraiser for Move for Hunger. This is a new event, although Move for Hunger has done a number of events in the city. And they're usually a lot of fun and obviously beneficial for what they raise their money for. This one will be a craft bazaar. It'll take place in Bradley Park for two days. Saturday, July 25th and Sunday, July 26th from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday and 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday. Any questions? The next one is a request from the Esprit Park Music Foundation. As you know, I have an association with the Music Foundation. We are putting together a film festival. It will be here April 10th, 11th and 12th. We'd like permission to use the council chambers. In the past, the Garden State Film Festival, when they held their festival, they did use the council chambers as one of their venues. They come in here and do some pipe and drapes and set up a screen. So it's one of the, they have certain blocks at these film festivals, so the council chambers is one of the block locations. It's our policy now that we do not provide venues for free, so we would be willing to pay whatever the council. We don't have a fee for that unfortunately in our special events, so we'd be willing to pay whatever fee is deemed reasonable. But we'd like permission to use that, use the council chambers here. It's on the weekend. We set up on Friday night and then show films on Saturday, Saturday evening and then also on Sunday afternoon.
Just out of curiosity, why wouldn't you, why, and maybe, I'm sure you probably already did, why wouldn't you just team up with the showroom? Since we already have a movie there.
We are using the showroom.
Oh, you are using the showroom?
Yeah, we have seven venues.
They're gonna be numbered and used there.
Okay.
And the council is a good venue because it brings people, you know, using the Paramount, but some of them stuck down on the boardwalk and it brings people down to downtown.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And we also have thirty wedding applications. We've become quite popular. We have, we put them, trying to save trees here, we put them on every application here, but we have vetted every date to make sure that there's no progress.
Good.
And wedding fees are non-refundable.
All fees are non-refundable.
Your second item, your presentations presented by Don Sannett, Redevelopment Director of Central Business District. The redevelopment area redevelopment plan amendment at 621 Lake Avenue.
Good evening everybody. January 14th of this year, I think before you, I started to propose amendments for Central Business District Redevelopment Plans, which would allow for the expansion of the lake house, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. The music center building, this music instruction, recording studio and music. They want to expand and to build into a building to the west. The redevelopment plan currently does not permit that use in the building to the west, so the plan actually needs to be amended to allow for it. You agreed to forward it to the planning board and planning board looked at it. They found it to be consistent with the philosophy of the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan and the City Master Plan. Like the planning board, I do recommend that you introduce an ordinance, which will amend the plan to allow for this use site specific to the property to the west, that 621 Lake. There's a lot of support for music and entertainment in various city documents, the City Master Plan, the economic revitalization strategy that was prepared, Esprit Park cultural development was prepared. So I support it, your planning board supports it. And I would recommend you introduce an ordinance, which will amend the plan to allow for the lake house to expand. The ordinance was in your packets for the state even. You have my report, my report in your packets and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I didn't have any questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Your second matter is companion, item to Don's presentation. It's John Leiderstorf, the owner of the lake house. He's requesting a tax abatement for the lake house at 621 Lake Avenue.
Hello. I'm the owner of Lake House Music, which is the music building that I'm speaking about. And we've been, all the businesses have been doing pretty well in our building. And we've been trying to get the building next door, which you probably know has been abandoned for many years and quite a high sort. We would like to expand to that space and put more similar, more similar types where we're doing that, more music education and more music related businesses. We, I'm not a professional developer. I did this one time and it's going well, but I did go to the banks finally and get the people who own the building next door to sell to us. The price of the building was very expensive. And to totally redevelop that property is very, very expensive. Fortunately, because we've done this once before and we had a good architect, we have a good plan to bring in very similar and very small things, it would be small businesses in that area. And the bank has been helpful in this regard because we kind of have a sense of what the fees and expenses are going to be. And the way that it works when we move into this space is that we divide the building into multiple spaces for these different small businesses. And we share the taxes equally, you know, we divide it up, you know, by square foot. So the square feet that you have, you pay, but we were paying taxes. The tax number is, it's a very heavy burden for us. It wouldn't allow the project to move forward. And even the, you know, the appraisals, when we had hired the appraisal company, the bank had hired an appraisal company. It was just assumed for this to work that we'd have to get a tax abatement. I discussed with the tax assessor about the possibilities. And the pilot program seemed to be the best tax abatement for us and seemingly the city. The difference for us, like I said, it really is, there are so many expenses and so many costs to do this. It would be pretty good for us if we didn't have to pay. We are a community based business. We do a lot of nonprofit work. We do serve the community in a lot of ways and we feel that this will benefit the community. We also do, we're doing a lot in the public school systems and we're at the very beginning of that. I've had another meeting today with the director of Courage Williams and Esprit Park Schools. And I'm meeting with the superintendent from the beginning of March. And we're finding more ways to serve the public school systems as well as the private things that we're doing now. I think the last time that I was here, I've got to tell you in on what we're doing in the community. We're working, we built a recording studio in the Boys and Girls Club. And we've now gone up, we have three classes in fact. We have a Boyz Engineering class on Tuesdays at the Boys and Girls Club. We have a record label class every Wednesday and a hip hop dance class every Thursday. We're also running the, we've fundraised and are running the music program at the Public School of Charge School Academy. That's for kindergarten through eighth grade and two after-school classes. There's other departments in the community that we're working with now, we do music education, not formal. So we really think that this will benefit the community. And we're just requesting to have support and an abatement for the pilot, pilot abatement from the city.
Any questions for?
I have some questions. Is anyone else?
Well, I don't have any questions. I have questions too.
Yeah, so minor, technically, they're more to Eric than probably to you.
Right.
Not the abatement in theory, but do we get the full amount for municipal? When I Star give, ask for an abatement, a pilot, which they do every time they want to build. There's a breakdown of who's, who gets cut when, for what period of time. So for example, usually the city gets the full amount of taxes. The county gets cut some portion and it's divided up into a mathematical formula. And then based on that formula, we decide if it's worth giving the abatement. That's for I Star's redevelopment project or any, any of the developers' redevelopment projects. So my questions are more on that. Do you want me to do that during the workshop session?
Let's address it now because I see no hard numbers. I mean.
I don't see any numbers either.
I didn't produce anything in the packet. I'm not sure, you know, how detailed.
Well, we want to know what we would have gotten and what we will get and the difference between the two. We can't vote on a tax abatement, a pilot without knowing what the numbers are.
And are they, are they, so five year, would the city get their full taxes and then would the abatement be somewhere else like the development ones or?
So there's essentially three ways to look at this. There's A, if the project is not going to happen. B, if the project is going to happen and he's going to receive the pilot or abatement. Or C, if he's going to do the project anyway, he's not going to receive anything. So there's a lot of numbers that need to be reviewed. I'm prepared to speak about them now, I have them in front of me.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? It's not necessarily a pilot, right? It's more like.
This would be a pilot.
It is a pilot?
Yeah.
It's not a.
It's under, it's under the chapter 441 abatement law. However, because he's adding 30% square footage to the building, he actually qualifies as a four or five year pilot, which is more beneficial to the city as opposed to a regular abatement because under a pilot, the city would actually keep 95% of what the taxpayer is paying.
Okay.
As opposed to under conventional taxes, the municipality is only keeping 57%. So in certain, in certain cases, the taxpayer may be paying less, however, the municipality is actually receiving more.
Sure.
Now, in this case, that's, that's not what would occur for, if you're going to compare if the property's developed or if the property's developed on the conventional taxes versus if the property's developed under a pilot, the city is going to get less money. However, what should probably be considered is if the project is not going to happen, what that, what the property is going to pay in taxes if it's not going to happen, which is substantially less than what the city would receive under the pilot.
So, so I guess then I have questions. What do we get in taxes now? What would we get there? How would it be broken down? And again, I'm not, Eric, you can do this Wednesday. I'm not, I'm not saying you have to do it right now. I'm just saying I would want to see all of those numbers before, I just would want to see them like we see them for development. I understand it's a different project. I just want to be, it's going to be easier if I look at them and then you explain them to me than if you just explain them to me. But again, or putting it on for workshop for Wednesday if the, if it's a public issue, I don't care about that. I'm just saying I'd rather have the numbers in front of me before you start screaming numbers at me and I'm like, what?
Are you in a position to give the numbers now because I don't believe Eric is going to be able to be here Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
You have the numbers? So all of this is based on projections of course, because the project did not happen yet. And the only thing that I took as goal is what rents, commercial properties that are valued based off of what rents they actually receive. And they're going to pay taxes or it's going to be, they're going to pay the pilot. What it's going to be valued is based off of the rents that it receives. So in its current condition, the way I'll break this down is over a five year, over the total of under five years. If the property, if nothing happens with the property, the property owner over five years will pay roughly seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars in taxes. The municipality will only keep 57% of that, which is about forty-two thousand dollars. Now, if the project were to happen and there's no pilot permitted, the property owner will pay over the five year period roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the municipal portion of that will be about, will be 57%, which is about eighty-seven thousand dollars. Now, under a five year pilot, and this is why Mr. Leiderstorf says it's so crucial that he receives it, over, if it's, if the project is completed and the pilot is granted over five years, rather than paying the hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he would only be paying roughly sixty-three thousand dollars. Now, the municipality would keep 95% of that as opposed to the 57%. Therefore, the municipality would keep about sixty thousand of the, of the sixty-three thousand. So the, for money that the municipality would actually receive, you're looking at three numbers. You're looking at about forty thousand if nothing happens with the property, about sixty thousand if the pilot is granted and the project is complete, or about ninety thousand if the project is complete, or I'm sorry, eighty, eighty-seven thousand if the project is complete and there's no pilot granted.
And what happens in the sixth year?
The sixth year is taxed at its full value under conventional taxation. So it would be at its full value times, municipality would receive the 57%.
And are there other projects like on Cookman that have received either the five year tax abatement or?
Yeah.
Yeah, his, well, his other project received the abatement. The showroom received the abatement.
Five years as well, right?
Five year abatement and just came off about a year or two ago. It was all the projects on the boardwalk.
Every season.
They received five years.
And that five year abatement is modeled after like a residential abatement, right? Like I do my bathroom, I invest the money to do my bathroom and I can get a tax break for five years to recoup the money that I invested.
Sure, the difference with the commercial project is the commercial projects have to go in front of council.
Right, right. The other ones automatically on application are accepted.
As long as they apply, as long as they apply within 30 days of completion of the project, then they would receive the abatement for five years for whatever values added on. In this, in this case, because it's commercial and because he's adding 30% square footage, it actually qualifies under the pilot versus just whatever value is added, is completely abated off for five years.
Right.
Which is what happened with this other project and which is what happened with the showroom.
And because of the pilot, because of that bump, it helps the city because we get the 95%.
You get 90, you keep 95%. And it's phased into over a five year period. Essentially, he would pay nothing the first year, pay based off of 20% the second year, 40% the third year, 60%, you know, and then goes to 80% is the fifth year. And then in the sixth year goes, it's taxed at its full, full interest rate.
And then are most commercial pilots five years? What were?
Yes.
They are, they're generally five years.
It can only, under this ordinance, it can only be five years.
Okay. So it can be less but it can't be more?
I don't think it can be less.
It's a five year.
It's a five year.
Okay. You can email me these Eric, right? I mean, I wrote them down and then I can give you a call five questions. You can email all of us them?
Any other questions?
Not, not.
I have just a general question, not specific to this one. And I think this one to me is like, this tax abatement was put in place and there's like a policy called, at least been made on residential, by I guess the former council, that we believe the tax abatement works for residential, right? And then.
Well, that's state law, right?
Yeah.
What's that, that it needs?
Five year is state law for residential.
Well, you.
You don't need to adopt it though.
The municipality would have to adopt the ordinance.
Which we, which we did do.
Which you did do in 2013. So for, and if the ordinance lives for five years.
But in five years, we can say we don't want to do that anymore.
Correct.
Right. So that's, for me, that's how we, that's like a policy, that's the policy call, right, on residential. And then I think we've also, in the past, done with the showroom with other, made a policy call. My question is about the other pilots and this is not for tonight really, but just to put on everyone's radar. How do we judge as a municipality or as a council, when we have pilots come in front of us? I think this one's a little clear, for me it's clear because we have made the decisions in the past and it's short term. But when we get these longer term pilots in front of us, what's the decision?
Should be judged, I suppose, from the city's perspective is, the first question that you should ask is, is this project going to happen without the abatement or the pilot? That's the number one question. And if the answer is yes, then, you know, potentially there's no real reason for the pilot to be granted. If the, if the answer is no, that the project is not going to happen, then it becomes a, you know, you'd have to look into the numbers to see if it makes sense for the city to, what they're going to give away for the project that actually occurred.
And how do you make that determination besides the word of the developer?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, that's my question.
Area of expertise.
Yeah, okay. And not in this case, this isn't pretend, but just in general. I thought while you're here I would ask the question.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's difficult right now. Things are positive and there's so many, so many great things that are happening. But it's a struggle for these small businesses. We're all small businesses and the lake house is next door. And, you know, we have to have, the tenants have to be able to make it. And we see a lot of people dropping off. Now, because we're all in this building together and we're, you know, sharing a mission and working together, you know, that's kind of where the strength is. But it really is tight and this is more expensive now. Everything is more expensive. And of course the taxes go up and have gone up. the taxes go up and have gone up and the cost of people developing, just the, you know, to get the contractors to do it now, it's just that they're busier. And of course, we're going to pay more for the building because we moved in next door. Something to do with that. But it's just, it really is, it's really, I mean, we really need it. We really do.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, one, one last question. Eric, I'm sorry. Okay. The way it's structured, it's structured that way by city or by state where it's twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred?
Yeah, structured that way by, by the state law, which is all covered under the ordinance. There's really no way to manipulate, you know.
So we, we couldn't take the sixty thousand divided by five years, just we're going to collect an eight thousand to get collecting zero thousand?
Right. So the first year would be zero, the second year it would be-
Five.
Yeah, so twenty percent and then forty percent, sixty percent as it fades in. Now, the only beneficial part to the city is that the city keeps ninety-five percent as opposed to fifty-seven percent.
All right, thanks.
Your next issue on your agenda is Director of Property Improvement, Ralph Kinney. I'm going to present my three areas. I have a general overview of the New Jersey Abandoned Properties Rehabilitation Act, the adoption of the vacant property registration ordinance for the City of Asbury Park, and a review of the New Jersey State's law holding by out-of-state creditors responsible for maintenance of vacant properties.
Is this the list or the, or pictures?
No.
Is this one packet? Or should I take one out and pass it? Oh, this is one packet. Okay.
The, the package of the, with the photographs, two packages, they pass around each other. Those are properties that the department has identified that are, we are considering the Fallen Abandoned Property Act, that is, we will be getting notice of reowns, we get notices, we will publish and pay the property visitor identified on the photographs we've worn. And there's also additional information as to each property that have been gathered over the last few months regarding police calls, fire activity, BPW calls, code enforcement, notices of violation, etc., etc. So that's just some of the information that I tried to compile and summarize for you, some of the issues going on at each of those properties. Just to give you an overall idea of the properties we're talking about. It's not, I can't say it's final, but we have to do last minute checking. Because we didn't publish this list, it's as of the day that it was published, that we have to make sure that all these conditions exist. This is really just a precaution process.
Okay, thanks.
So first, what I'd like to do is, you know, review the abandoned properties act because I think most of the council, if not all you, I don't know that you were council members when the first ordinance was adopted in two thousand twelve, so I thought maybe we should go over it, just so you understood the law. So the act was passed and there's, it requires that for a property to be considered abandoned, you have to satisfy a threshold criteria that it not have been legally occupied for six months. And once that's determined, it then has to meet any one of the secondary criteria. Okay? So it has to meet one of these following criteria. Number one, if the property is in need of rehabilitation and reasonable judgment of the public officer, no rehabilitation has taken place during that six-month period. The public officer will be myself, based on the ordinance that you adopted back in September. The second, secondary criteria is that construction was initiated-
Just back to the first one. So when you say no rehabilitation has taken place during, during the last six-month period?
Yep.
What does that mean exactly? They haven't, what if they've replaced four windows?
That's, it's, it's based on my reasonable judgment that that has been sufficient rehabilitation to make it happen.
Okay. So if they've done even a little bit of work, they're in the game to keep the house, to not have it be on the list. Okay, the opposite of what, what you're saying. Okay.
It would have to be sufficient to show if they're making an effort to make the property habitable. Now, if we get further down, some of what the other issues are in law, there's aspects where you can, we can impose restrictions on, on property owners who are planning to do work to rehab the property, to keep the property on the list if they appeal it, or to take the property off the list and then already put on the list. And we will then have the ability to impose restrictions such as closing the bond, make sure that they're going to do the work. They would have, I think, a twelve-month period to get the work done. If they don't, they're back on the list and they're subject to all the other penalties and remedies that we have.
Okay.
So the secondary was that construction has been initiated and discontinued prior completion, leaving the building unsuitable for occupancy, and no construction has taken place within six months after the date of determination that the building has been abandoned. The third is at least one installment of property tax remains unpaid and delinquent as of the date of determination. Or the fourth is that the property has been determined to be a nuisance by the public officer in accordance with the nuisance criteria. Now, that nuisance criteria that I defined for you as, and that's determined by myself to be a nuisance if anyone in the following block, the property is found to be unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use pursuant to NJSA forty, code forty-eight, that's cheap and blue, the condition of vacancy of property materially increases the risk of fire to the property in the base of properties. The third, the property is subject to unauthorized entry, the potential health and safety hazards, and the owner has failed to take reasonable and necessary measures to secure the property, or the municipality to secure the property in order to prevent such hazard after the owner has failed to do so. I can tell you that from the property enforcement department, that's an ongoing problem with the property act. They are left, the people won't board them up properly, and we have to send BPW out to reboard them up and secure them. The people are getting in and squatters are in here and other things are going on in this house as well. The presence of vermin or the accumulation of debris, uncut vegetation, or physical deterioration in the structure or grounds have created potential health and safety hazards, and the owner has failed to take reasonable and necessary measures to remove hazards. Or last, dilapidated appearance or other condition of the property materially affects, materially affects the welfare, including the economic welfare of the residents in the area in close proximity to the property, and the owner has failed to take reasonable and necessary measures to remedy the conditions. Now, there's two exceptions to the definition of abandoned property. Number one is that a property in which an entity other than the municipality holds a tax sale certificate is not deemed to be abandoned if the owner of the certificate continues to pay all municipal taxes and dues what they do. And two initiates foreclosure proceedings within six months after the property is eligible for foreclosure. Now, this law, if it's imposed, it allows these people to expedite the foreclosure proceedings as well. And then the second cri, the exemption is that a property is used on a seasonal basis, it can only be deemed to be abandoned if it meets any of the two of the secondary criteria. So the first threshold would be that it wasn't occupied for the six months. But if it's seasonal, then you have to show that two of that secondary, the secondary four that I talked about apply for it to be considered abandoned. So that's the way that we define abandoned properties and create the list initially.
So can I just ask a couple of questions about the exception?
Sure.
So I have a property and I pay my taxes on it on time regularly, but it's fallen into disrepair and I've met your other criteria. Is that something that would be on the Abandoned Property Act? So if you pay your taxes, whatever your property looks like, for all intensive purposes, I'm not saying, obviously if it's a hazard, but if you pay your taxes every month religiously or quarterly, or if you pay all of your bills, your water bill, your taxes, everything else, does that get, keep you off the abandoned property?
Are you, are you, are you living in the, in the property for the-
Nobody's living in the property.
Okay. Then if, in my opinion, as the officer, you pointed, anyone's duty to reapply that either it's in need of rehabilitation, in my reasonable judgment, and there hasn't been any rehabilitation, or construction was discontinued and it left it unsuitable for occupancy, and no construction has taken place for the last six months, or the property's been, is determined to be a nuisance by me, based on that nuisance criteria.
So you only need one to fit one of the secondary criterias?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. You know what? That's what I got lost on. Okay.
Except for the exemptions for seasonal property.
Okay. Then you need two.
Then you need two.
I gotcha. Okay.
Okay. And don't shoot the messenger because this comes as no surprise because I said I was going to ask this question. And the first one, when you did your article and it was picked up on Facebook and everything, how come the Esperanza isn't included?
The Esperanza is not a building that was ever habitable. And so what I've, since you, you asked me that recently, we had the meeting, Mayor, I, I did some checking and there's something that I was going to talk to you toward the end of my presentation about that we could address that property with. And it's nothing that I'm prepared to present tonight, but it is something that other towns have done, Jersey City has done, where they had, adopted a vacant lot ordinance.
Okay. How about the old Fish's Bakery, owned by the state of New Jersey, that sits on Memorial between Fourth and Fifth, that's been boarded up for eight years and it just sits there?
Um, what is, do you need me to address that?
Oh, Memorial Drive between Fourth and Fifth, that takes up the entire block and it goes about five hundred feet deep. So I'm guessing, hmm.
I don't see it on the-
Eleven hundred block memorial, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, I don't see it on the draft list, but I'll certainly check it out for you in the morning.
It's owned by the state of New Jersey. They bought it like ten years ago for early charter and they, they just been boarded up, nothing, and it was habitable. So, okay.
When you say habitable, you're also talking about habitable in terms of, was it commercially rented out or you said-
It could be commercial or residential does not matter.
Oh, it doesn't matter which, okay.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, we all love the history of it. It was better, it was there, they voted that and they started building again. And it never got past the point that it could ever have been lived in. I mean, so-
Right.
This really is to address properties that have been lived in at one time and people have abandoned.
Or rented for some sort of business use and people have abandoned. Okay.
Correct. Or home, home for business use, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, but as I said, Jersey City has a vacant lot, that they adopted, that I'm thinking, and I have to do some of these research, so I don't want to hold you to this, but I'm thinking that maybe we could look at something like that, because we made the other area of the city too, where there's vacant lots. And I haven't really been thinking of that right now. But I think that would address those types of problems. I think that's my initial idea. So if you have any more questions on that aspect, I can move on to the next part, and that's notice, notice to owners and appeals process. What I did, just so you can understand, we have a floor chart that will run through the process for you, and I just handed it out. And it talks about the notice and appeal timetable at the bottom and runs through the process for you. So up at the top, you see the municipality asks the ordinance to be done. The public officer completes the abandoned property list, that's what Eric did, and so they're able to work it out. And then it goes down to public officer provides notice and the public to, and notice the public and to the owners. Now, the owners have an ability to appeal. One of the issues with this law, or issues with one of the things that this law addresses is although it expedites the city's rights to, you know, go after and have remedies available to them to take these properties and make them suitable again, it also doesn't, it's, it's, I guess, make sure that the owner's rights to due process are not taken away. So the people still have an appeals process, they still have their legal rights, it's just that it expedites the process. So they have, there's a sixty-day appeal period for them to appeal whether the property could include on the list. And we hold a hearing, the public officer has a redetermination hearing, and then we find whether the property belongs on the list or it doesn't. If they start, they agree that they're going to start to rehab it, we can make a determination to wait, give them labor, give them up to twelve months, do the work. We can impose restrictions, impose other conditions on them doing this work within the twelve months to make sure we do it. And then if they don't, they lose the appeal, then we move on to the next step.
An appeal made in Superior Court?
Appeals made to my cell. I'm here, officer.
But if they don't, we're here.
Then they go to Superior Court. They have the right to go to Superior Court, yes. So the next part is talking about the acquiring and maintaining of the abandoned properties. There's four remedies available to the city once we determine the property's abandoned under the law. We've noticed people properly, we published our list, gotten through the appeals period. And the next part is how, what do we do with the properties? So there's four remedies. The first would be the tax sale foreclosure remedy. And that would be where the city has the right to have a special tax sale set up that's different from the regular tax sale. And it would expedites the process for foreclosing on the tax sale certificate. Much quicker than, it takes two to three years sometimes to foreclose. You don't have to wait for that long, you know, that long period. It can happen in six to seven months. I can tell you that based on this information I'm going to provide you that was just provided to me today, to me today, that that's not something that we will probably be using. The next remedy available to us would be spot life eminent domain proceeding. And that also expedites, what a typical eminent domain proceeding would go two, three years, it expedites it to a period of six to seven months for the city to negotiate with the owner, taking back the property. Now, I know Mayor Moore, when we met, had a concern about, does the city have money to pay for these properties? And what happens is, there's a different type of appraisal process that is applied to the abandoned properties process. So that a big chunk of the appraisal, or the process includes a piece that deals with the cost to rehab the property, to put it in habitable condition. And in probably eighty percent of the time for these properties, the cost to rehab is so significant that it drops what the value or the cost to the city would be to acquire these properties down to some minimum number, down to sometimes zero, where the city would take these properties back. Okay? The next way to apply the property would be acquisition by gift. Once a property is put in abandoned property, the property owner doesn't want to deal with it, they can give the property to the city for public use. And the state can use it for, if the city wants to sell it, if you, for parking grounds, if you need to do that. The fourth would be private sale by the owner, or obviously a rehab by the owner. And what I've found out in studies and researching this, how it works in other cities and towns that have adopted this law by the state, is that it seems that twenty to twenty-five percent of properties that are placed on the abandoned properties list are either sold by other owners very quickly, or the owners rehab, if they will take properties. So that, the basis really is to incentivize these owners to take actions at their own hands, try to make us work. And throughout the whole state, people I've talked to in all these different towns and cities, that's, it seems to be the same number, somewhere between twenty to twenty-five percent of the properties are either rehabbed by their owners or sold by their owners after it's been on the list. The next would be, what's there on the list maintaining the abandoned properties? And that I'm going to talk a little bit about, get to the vacant property ordinance that I'm also proposing that we adopt. that I'm also proposing that we adopt. But what happens also in that regard, is when the city includes the property on the abandoned properties list, there's several different things. I'll talk about the ordinance when I get to that, but any of the work that we do for the properties, like boarding it up, maintaining the property in the summer, cutting the grass, shoveling the snow, et cetera, by our DPW department, or we also have the ability, once we start this process, to hire outside contractors to do the work for maintaining the properties. They give us a bill, DPW gives a bill, and based on this other ordinance that I'm proposing, rather than have to go through the normal process to get a lien on the property for that work, once that bill is given to us, and by virtue of the fact that the property's on the list, the bill automatically becomes a lien on the property. And useful lien is superior to any other liens, so that would also give us the right to foreclose on useful liens if they became significant, under the tax sale foreclosure process.
The, the bill for, the bill for the property, turn, maintaining the property, turns into a lien, how? I mean, there's a legal process for a lien?
Well, that's why I said when I get to the, to my subject presentation, the vacant property ordinance, there's a piece in that ordinance that will automatically state that, once the property is registered on the vacant property registry, we're gonna impose any work that's done from that day on, that we, we're required to do because the owner doesn't do it, maintaining the property, we automatically get a lien for that work, we don't have, we do not have to go through the regular process that, you know, normally takes forever to get a lien on the property. So that's what I started with.
Why does it normally take forever? I mean, when I worked for the city, if we got a complaint from Code, DPW would go cut the grass, I would...
Initiate a bill.
Initiate a bill as for FEMA rates, have it typed up, send it to the tax office, and it was put on as a lien immediately.
I thought the same thing, and while I know what the process is, it takes a long time, so the bill, the property owner, you have to make sure they're served with it properly, you have to find them first, and most of them, you can't find them with these kinds of properties. But Mayor, when I was getting ready for tonight's presentation, I went back to see what was going on before I got here last year, and we searched and found all the boxes of all those bills you're talking about, and nobody ever pursued making, converting those bills into liens, so there's no reason I'd pay those properties for any work that's been done prior to last year.
That's disappointing. But I mean, I think that started when the city adopted this, this abandoned properties list, because before those, those liens used to go through.
I talked, well, I, I'm not sure when Jesse got here as the tax collector, but I, I read with him, and he told me that since he's been here, he has not imposed any...
But he, he's been here after this was adopted by past administration. But before that, the liens were going through, and I would even check them, so in texting lists, I would buy some.
Okay, but what I can tell you is, I, I have a list that was given to me today, and I'm glad to pass this up to you, and we can pass it to you.
No, no, okay.
This is a list as of today, for the properties that we have on that initial list, that shows that there are, one, two, three, four properties. It's like nine to ten properties that the taxes are not paying, meaning all the other properties, the taxes are being paid. And I think they're the lenders, or the property owners are paying the taxes just to sell the property, wait until it's, it's worth something. And there's also, Jesse told me, no, there's no liens here except for, I think, two properties that have, with some liens that have been properly recorded on these properties.
Okay, and I'm gonna interrupt you one second. And good presentation, we're gonna continue. So this is for abandoned properties. Now, if we have a lot on Boardman Avenue, that the homeowner does not cut, and we send DPW over there to cut it, we're not putting a lien on that property?
We should be.
But...
All right, it's the same as...
I, I agree, we should be.
That'll be something I'm gonna be checking on tomorrow.
Thank you.
It's the same as if we have a, an unfit hearing, all right, and relocation is, is ordered.
Okay.
All right, we should be putting a lien on, so we can...
And again, that's for empty, that's for empty lots out of abandoned properties.
I was a little bit upset when I went down to talk to him, to find that, that fact, and he did confirm for me that it's on no properties in the city. And I said to him, why not? He said, well, when James F. Lauer was here, I guess there was an issue with a property where Jesse tried to impose an useful lien, and the property was sold, and I guess the lien didn't get taken care of at the sale of the property, and so it came back two years later. So for whatever reason, Jesse said, it's just not the process he's been following.
Okay, well, that's something we'll, we'll re-implement. Hey, sorry to interrupt you, keep on going.
Before, before we move on, I just had a question about the, um, the spotlight eminent domain.
Yes.
Can you, to, to Mayor Moore's point about, um, like, say, when you do a normal eminent domain, you can not file the declaration of taking, right? And that gives you like a period where you can have the commission give you what they're gonna, kind of their appraisal price gives you, and then you can pull out, right? Is, is this, is it possible to do that with this spotlight eminent domain proceeding as well? So that the city wouldn't be on the hook automatically if we went down that route to do the not declaration of taking?
I don't think that's the case, but I, I can...
Okay.
Okay, so then whatever applies to the normal eminent domain would apply here, so you could do that as a way to step out? Yeah? Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I have Diane Sterner here with me, and I'm trying to find her card to introduce her.
Hi, I'm Diane Sterner, and I'm the Community Strategies Advisor for New Jersey Community Capital, which is a community development financial institution. And we work with municipalities and community organizations around the state to help them figure out better strategies for the borrowers and renters, and applying the abandoned property laws and other similar tools to help people, you know, keep these properties in care.
Diane has been here before, when the council got the first ordinance, and answered questions that the council had at the time. And I thought I'd bring her today because she is constantly in touch with, with municipalities all over the state that currently have this law, and has helped them implement it in their cities.
What, what was the date when it was first adopted?
The, the law, the abandoned...
No, no, Asbury Park, two thousand...
Asbury Park, it's two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve, thank you.
And then I guess you guys, you folks amended it last September, which made the public officers out of it on Saturday.
I'm really curious about absentee landlords. Uh, there's a lot of houses I see that's not in these pictures, and I'm wondering if we're going after them also? Or you haven't gotten around to it, or...
Well, I think that's a piece that is, when I get to the next part, that I think is probably gonna be covered by that. This next part is really important to us, I think, and I think you'll see why in a second.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
So, municipal, start the abandoned property list, whether or not all the...
Grab, grab the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
The, um, municipal can start an abandoned property list, whether or not you have a complete inventory of abandoned properties. So, that's not to say that you shouldn't identify all the other properties, but you can start with a list like the one you've got, and then you can add to them as convenient or as problems related to other properties.
The other thing I can mention, based on Diane's thought of that, is that I, I've spoken to, as I said, people all over the state in the last few months, trying to get ready for this, and I talked to the folks from Roselle on Friday, as a matter of fact, and we had to spend about forty-five minutes on the phone, they were going through the ups and downs when they implemented their law, but what they told me was, they initially, when they started, identified a hundred properties for their first list, just by going around and having the code officers do what we did, by driving around and seeing how's they were boarded up. So they had a hundred properties or like that, that you could easily tell from the street, these are abandoned properties. And so they published a list, they signed that, and then they adopted this vacant property ordinance, which I get to in a second, requires that vacant properties be, be registered by the city, with the city, by the owners. And once they did that, and word got out, because there was a fee that is involved in that, for the registry, once they did that, and worded that out to the rest of the community, their list jumped from a hundred properties that they knew to be abandoned just by sight, to three hundred within two months. From residents calling in, saying, okay, there's another property that I property, there's a lot of properties in town that I can tell you that provides the information we get through the code enforcement that, you know, are probably gonna be considered abandoned under the law, that we don't know about right now, and we'll find out about them once we adopt the ordinance. So the next thing I wanted to talk about was nuisance abatement proceedings, and that's really with regard to the work that Mr. Fettah and I, and I'm, I'm gonna be working with Pam Lamberton, on revising the new property maintenance code. A piece that's missing, you know, adding it, making it a little bit more clear for us, for the properties to understand. And so, there's going to be, hopefully, received, to adopt ordinance for it that will address nuisance abatement of these properties that are left, like, abandoned or vacant, et cetera, so that there is penalties imposed, and what happens when they don't maintain the properties through the property maintenance code. So that's something to be addressing with this new ordinance that Fred and, and Pam Lamberton and I are gonna need that to address. So that brings us to the next part, which was the abandonment, adoption of the vacant property registration ordinance. And I, I see there's a copy of the draft here that I proposed to review. What I would tell you, because I'd like to, the ordinance, the council ordinance, we're able to maintain and adopt into this ordinance, there are a few changes I'd like to add, revise, based on a new law that was adopted, and signed into law, I don't know, it's just from two thousand and fourteen by Governor Christie, which essentially holds out-of-state creditors for properties under foreclosure, responsible to not only register the property that's vacant, but appoint an in-state management person that is going to take care of maintaining the property during the foreclosure process. That's, that's a key, because what's happening a lot is that we're issuing summonses to property under foreclosure, no one's showing up to court, and it's just over and over and over again, that summonses are issued, because nobody can issue a bench warrant to, obviously, because they're in foreclosure, property owners are long gone, and this law is going to give us the ability to impose restrictions, and penalties, and pretty intense fines on some of these creditors for not maintaining the properties. So, I'm not sure if you want me to go through the, the ordinance that I posed piece by piece, if you reviewed, do I have specific questions? Or how you want me to address that?
I have. You can go ahead.
Go ahead.
My, honestly, it's just, F two, F one-one, or F two, on page two, the, the very last paragraph on page two, I didn't under, if you can just, I didn't understand what that paragraph meant.
Okay.
Where the owner is an entity?
Where the owner is an entity experiencing rehabilitation for redeveloping the vacant properties, where the property is subject to this ordinance and being planning to develop a project, rehabilitation for redeveloping, assisted with municipal plans, and ordinances whereby virtue financing market and other conditions, that project may require more than one year, the municipal officer may extend the waiting for the registration at the end of the month, but based upon application upon a loan, as long as the municipal officer finds that the owner's making redevelopment progress or application of the project, the owner shall provide a local officer with such application, saying, we plan financing applications, application for dangerous approval, or other evidence of progress. That, that's for entities that are rehab entities, I mean...
It's actually for developers, so that you don't penalize developers that are coming in and assembling sites for redevelopment that the city wants to happen. Because otherwise, you're charging them fees, and they would be reacting to additional, you know, cost for their project.
Okay.
Now, the other thing too, when, when these, when liens are imposed on these properties for the maintenance that we're, we're doing, or we're hiring outside contractors to do on these properties, and these liens now are being recorded against these properties, when, if, if someone, you know, buys a tax sale certificate or whatever, or they're paying the taxes, those liens get paid when the taxes get paid now. That's money we're gonna be recouping from that. We'll receive for a long time.
There's also a provision of the Abandoned Properties Act, where if you don't get the taxes, you can go after the city, go after the other assets of the, of the owner of the property, or if it's a corporation, you can go after the other assets of the corporation.
You can actually appear as a corporate bail, and go after the, the principal of the corporation, whether it be LLC.
Via a lien, or...
Via the law.
You need a lien on it.
You need the lien on it first.
By collecting, again.
So, you can go after them personally?
Yeah.
And how many years...
It's really, it's a powerful tool to get abandoned properties.
How many years does that take, according to what's that costs and legal fees?
How long does it take? Well...
It's, it's imposed...
Well, I mean, anybody with a...
It's in the law, and we, we spend, we're...
Who do you know who's successfully done that?
The one that is doing it now is Salem City now, so, Salem City, Salem City in South Jersey is pursuing that, and I haven't talked to them recent, Salem. And I have, have been talking to them recently to find out whether it has been challenged.
So my unders, and just, this will be my last question. My understanding of liens, usually that you put on a property, is, those are cashed out for all intensive purposes when the property is sold, right? We only harm you if you're selling your property, if you're not. So you're saying that the liens that we're talking about, the, with the vacant, what's it actually called, the vacant properties, you're, you're cashing out that lien prior...
Well, because...
If you're going after them personally, I assume you're doing it before there's any, before it gets to the point of sale.
Well, when each, each, each quarter's taxes become due, they get to go through the taxes, and that lien is on the tax bill.
Okay.
So if they're paying the taxes...
And what if they're not paying, what if they're not paying the taxes?
That's what I'm trying to tell you, the, the majority of the properties that are on the list are, everybody's paying their taxes, they're all current ended February.
There's a limited number there.
Right, because they're not getting any, they're not getting any obnoxious liens put on them, so, I, I'm... I own, I own a property right now, I'm paying my taxes. Now, you're gonna go hire her company to maintain my property, and that's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. Now, I just figured out, whoa, I just got a lien, I'm not paying my taxes. How long does it take before the city recoups what the city paid her?
Six to seven months, we can, in, in, commence a tax sale foreclosure for a municipal lien, not just taxes, and they are superior to all their liens, and it takes a six, six to seven month process, it's an expedited, expedited process to foreclose on those liens.
Okay. Get us results from Salem City.
Okay.
That, somebody, I mean, just because, everything that sounds simple is not simple in New Jersey. And, you know, I just don't wanna like, give somebody the power to start hiring contractors, go after this one, go after that one, awesome, we have contractors, two hundred thousand dollars, and we're recouping nothing, or everybody's taxes are going up because it was a well-intended law, but now we're recollecting nothing, because it was changed to, it was flipped to an LLC, it was flipped to somebody in Brazil, it was flipped to somebody here, and then all of a sudden, like, the taxpayers are picking up the burden.
The folks in Roselle, what they told me they do is, for example, in the summer, when people aren't cutting the grass, they, you know, all the properties that are on their list, that are registered, because they have a vacant property registry, they go out like once every two weeks, if those properties, the grass has not been cut by the mortgage holders or the owner of the property, they make a list, they send it over to DPW, they don't hire the outside contractors. Their DPW goes out like, say, two afternoons, they take, they knock all the properties out, they submit the bills to the tax collector, and they're automatically a lien.
Well, that's what used to happen, but when this was adopted by the people you mentioned before, and I'm not gonna mention in two thousand and twelve, that all just ceased.
But that was a process though, so for that process, Mayor, you had to go through the whole process to get to the lien, this takes you right from, do the work, give me a bill, and the bill's a lien.
It, it can, is there administrative fee built on top of the lien, as far as...
That's, that's where the registration fee is supposed to cover all the administrative costs of, of what we're talking about. And if you look at the, the schedule that we have posed there, I kind of adopted...
Can, can, can we build administrative costs on top of, because say, again, say, aim... Can, can, can we build administrative costs on top of, because say, again, say Amy owns a piece of property. We said Yvonne's company to go fix this piece of property. Yvonne charges us a thousand dollars. Now, so we put a lien for a thousand dollars, but meanwhile you had to do work, the tax assessor had to do work, everybody had to do work. Can we put an administrative percentage on top of the thousand dollars to recoup that?
No, I don't.
I think you just add the actual costs that you have to pay out of pocket. But the, there's a bunch of different pieces in this, right? So the registration ordinance that you were starting to talk about. That has a fee that's not related exactly to anything that you're paying out of pocket now. It's sort of a fee and the reason for the fee is that the city has to pay all sorts of charges for taking care of any properties. You have to, you have additional fire costs, police calls, all sorts of things like that. So in this proposed ordinance, the people that register their vacant properties would start paying the first year a thousand dollars per property. And then it would go up every year until they got to $200,000. As a disincentive for letting it remain vacant. And those fees would, in theory, cover the cost of taking care of the properties.
Okay.
If you collect those fees, you can use them to, you know, you could pick together a bunch of vacant properties and then evolve that as you recover money. You could hire another, you know, code inspector potentially depending on what you get. You know, some of the municipalities that have these vacant property registration ordinance in place are collecting something hundred thousands of dollars a year. And some of them have more abandoned properties than you do. So it's going to be sort of contingent on how, how big your list is, you're making sure that you get all the properties on your list so that you can send them notices to register and then just keeping up with them administratively so that after the first year you increase the fine and make them pay it. But it should be a fairly helpful income generator.
Okay.
And there's also a piece that penalizes people that don't.
To like just keep it to a year as opposed to allowing that second year or is that, is that the?
There's second times when you would want to do it though. It might be somebody that's really trying to renovate a property. Somebody new buys the property and they're trying to get the financing together, they start construction in, in month 11 and need six more months or something. So for you guys to express.
Okay, just. Judge McCollum tends to potentially be down the road, you know, just who knows what happens and if it could.
The thing is you want to strike a balance between cracking down on all the people that are building these properties, but also making it, not making it hard for people to want to come in and fix them without having to pay them costs. The next tipping point is you kind of fund, so you can close out the pole with this. And if you find that there are people that you would want to waive it for an extra year, then you can amend the ordinance at that point.
Okay. Or we could go back and if it looks like we're having properties languish, we can then amend it back. Okay. Right, sure.
It was the end of the summer and they just wanted to affect, they were through two quarters and started giving checks and questions and all sorts of things. So they're, we've got a short list of things they're going to find tuning in their, in their organs.
Yeah. Right, yeah, and I saw the Courier Post in Camden did like a whole, whole series on like what they're doing there and some mistakes, right, that they made. And I guess it's just like, most of these people are paying taxes, so that was one of the things that the people who weren't paying taxes hadn't heard from the city. But all these people have heard from the city, right?
Camden's in such a different situation.
Right, okay. I just would hate to like go down, make any of the same mistakes.
I think you're going to find that when you employ the abandoned property ordinance, you're going to have a lot of people, because they don't, well, both of them actually. I think they're going to, you're going to get their attention and a lot of people are going to act on the property without even doing anything else. It's a very cost-effective way to get properties.
And if they're responsible enough to be paying their taxes up to this point, they're just sitting on the property.
So you give them a little push over the edge.
And I think in certain areas in the city where these properties are maybe in neighborhoods where the property value is higher than the property value, those are the properties that you see solely, solely because this is adopted or re-apted.
One of the things that some of the cities do is they put a list pendants on the properties that are on the abandoned property list so that that, anybody looking at our properties can know that there's a cloud on it and the owner is going to try to hide it and come up with a plan for the property.
I believe this ordinance allows us to do that.
So the owner will know if they're not paying the registration fee and they're not paying the insurance, that they're more or less forfeiting their property.
But they're not actually, so there's two tracks to talk about. Like the first is the abandoned property list that you can give the city to the abandoned property owners that are in the list. And with that one, you know, that's where you push the property on the list, you're going to know this process and you put it on this official list. It gives you all these other powers, the power to take a property by spot selling that you can only do, for example, this. And several of the other things are not mentioned. So that is, that, that whole process is about taking the property if you need to because you've already sort of given up on the owner doing anything with it. Even though that's the case, a lot of orders, like the 20, 25% of the owners of properties still step up and do something with the property because it gets their attention. With the vacant property registration ordinance, that is not a track to take property away from the owner. It's a track to get them to step up and pay them and all that. And you can, through the code enforcement office, you can take them to court for, you can assess fines and violations for them not registering, for them not getting their insurance in place and any of those things we talked about that are in the last, the last section of the proposed ordinance. But then the end result would not be that you would take the property and you just fine them, harass them until they do something with the property.
But also the, 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 the suits really are supposed to work together. The vacant property ordinance is really meant to give the abandoned property ordinance a period of adoptees. So that, you know, really kind of makes people stand up and take notice now that we're going to do this, we're getting serious. You have to register your property.
Do you have any idea what percentage of those owners who pay taxes also have insured their property? Have they all insured their property or?
I don't know that now, but this is how we're going to know going forward. They're going to have to give us notice, so provide evidence of insurance.
You know, the purpose for that is obvious. Some of the city want to cover disastrous things that happen with those properties. And it gives you like more, you know, it's going to be less expensive for the city to deal with those properties once that owner starts insuring them. Because they're probably not, a lot of them probably are insured now.
I would assume very few are insured.
Right. The only gift is a, you know, cost of this mortgage law and the grant.
Oh, okay. So there's a credit responsibility law that I talked about. What I, what I want to mention with that is that a big part of, you know, utilizing that less successfully is that the city had in place a way to track properties and what's going on with properties. And most of the cities I'm talking to have an up-to-date database and they have computers. They have like software and all that stuff that goes today in this century that, that we don't currently have that's going to allow us to do that. So I, I, I think we really need to look at that piece going forward and not say that's to happen tomorrow. But I think that that's going to make our lives and our job a lot easier going forward. The G O three O system that I know has been talked about in the past, like the guy who presented something previously in my budget for the year. You know, Kevin Katty was responsible for getting that all put together, that presentation by that company. But that allows all the departments in the city to track and edit the property and have like information at our fingertips. Like I can punch in and address to a property and I can get everything that's going on with that property from code violations, police calls, fire calls, you know, destruction permits, whether they're open or closed, when they've been taken. Any of that stuff is all, you know, accessible immediately through these kind of database or software systems. And we have none of that now. All the tracking that's done in my office and the code enforcement office is all manual. I have to go searching for files. It's all handwritten. And it's just crazy. None of it seems to be up to date. I have, since I started there, people in the office, I had Dwight Elsick as volunteer to come in and help input the information. We are still in for the C O's that issued the property in 2012. That's how far behind we are that are not inputting to our records.
So what's the name of the system that you, I don't remember you presenting it, so.
I did present it to you folks, but I included it in my budget as something going, going forward. They, they.
What's the name of the system?
They proposed a fee of five hours per transaction for code transactions for issuance of T O Ts and C Os. And each department that they met with, they, they proposed a separate fee. I know Kevin got a fee. But I think what I was planning to do in the future was to maybe ask if the council would consider a presentation by them or some other company that offers the same software, just to have an idea of what we're talking about.
Yeah, just so I can Google them. I'm sorry, what, what's the name of them?
I think they go by G O, G E O.
G E O.
Three O and they're at an hour and a half.
What would be the ballpark cost? If something, we're going to have to go out R P's, R Q's?
Well, as I said, they, they, they gave me a proposal where they were willing code enforcement, five dollars per transaction.
Okay, but what does that equate to at the end of the year? Is it 3,000, is it 17,005 where we have to go out for R Q's?
I think I came up to like eight or nine or 1,000 based on what we did last year. But don't forget I had very few code enforcement officers last year. Our numbers were down because, you know, we had a man down. But I can certainly, if there's anything else to do, we'd like to come back and talk about it.
When you say Fred's going to have to decide, we have to go out to bid on it.
When you say transactions, so I understand like the T O and C Os or T O Ts and C Os. But what would, what would the fire, like every time they have an incident report that goes in? Or like police call, because there's no revenue generated by the city there?
For fire, it would, it would be the fire prevention bureau side, not necessarily the fire response side. And the quote they gave us was $10 per registration.
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 So they take a piece of the registration fee?
It was really about $8.50, but the life hazards go to the state, they don't get any of that money back. So it's around $10, you cover those costs off.
But I had gotten back to, I had asked why they can't give us, the city went over, just to add it to per department. So I think they were considering to try and reduce that, do that as long as they knew that all the departments were going to participate. And the only way it's going to work is if all the departments participate. If I have construction, we get fired, we get everybody on board. That's how it's going to work. But that is crucial to some of these things that we're going to hopefully be adopting going forward, working. I think I pretty much covered everything. Do you have specific questions or questions?
No, I have no questions.
No more questions. Thank you. You, and Rob, you'll just email me the name of the company so I can Google them.
Okay. Can you tell me how this would work with the ordinance that we're proposing that could be on a schedule to be considered or?
Well, it's, it's a little bit of Fred's schedule, right? You're the one who's.
Well, it's, it's already in a form. I, I would just have to put it into proper form for introduction. And if there's a council policy call that you want to move forward with this, then we could bring it before you with your next council meeting in two weeks.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I would ask you to send me that quickly. You said this in a long range. The other part of it. I'd rather hold off on publishing my list until after that ordinance is adopted.
The abandoned?
Property list.
The, the, okay.
I'd rather have it all together, rather than do it piece by piece. I'd rather publish an abandoned property list, those properties that not have a property, the back me up.
And the vacant, just so I'm clear, the way they work together is the vacant property allows you to like levy the fines and the fees and then the abandoned property allows you to move forward taking the property.
Well, it also puts an onus on.
Put the onus on them if they're not going to move.
Registered the property.
Right, right, okay. Because the fees are coming.
Some people use them differently depending on what their strategy is. Jersey City started with the registration ordinance and then they did a more limited number on the abandoned property list. The ones that they actually thought they would take, but it's sort of the way, it doesn't, it's probably better to include as many properties as you can in a list because you're going to probably get more people reacting by doing something positive.
So what's going to happen is like we were talking about before, we have these, say, 45 properties that we know right away fit the definition of abandoned property, they're on the first list. If we had that vacant property ordinance adopted, we would be sending that list out and we publish it, we put it on our website. They said they sent flyers out, they did everything they could to make sure everybody knew the thousand and hundred books. Within just a month or two, people are calling and identifying and saying, hey, this property, don't use it, whatever, and their list tripled.
I don't have a problem with it going on for the, for the initial reading. Yeah, introduction at the council meeting. And then there'll be a public session and, okay, that's fine. The next one, March.
It would be introduced in two weeks and then it would be advertised in the newspaper and it would be scheduled for a public hearing and second reading at some point thereafter.
Okay.
Have you taken, have you taken a look at the proposed ordinance?
He means you. We forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Diane.
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 Um, yes, I read the post ordinance.
Is it, since you're like a guru on this, is it common?
Yes, we actually, when Diane brought it a little bit, we had a, we have a model ordinance that we provide municipalities to work from. So the post ordinance uses our model as a basis and then Rob makes some tweaks based. So the post ordinance uses our model as a basis and then Rob makes some tweaks based on particularly, particulars for us. So it's based on all of our best knowledge and part of experience, what it is, how it is.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks.
Number four on your agenda, recommendations from Deputy Chief Anthony Salerno are regarding the installation of a handicapped parking space by number eleven thirteen. Are there any questions? Questions?
No.
Fifth on your agenda.
As a matter of fact, we already have this ordinance ready for introduction. It's on the agenda for your introduction tomorrow. I'm sorry, let me get it.
Fifth on your agenda, all right, a short presentation by Fire Chief Kevin Teddy, all right, in regards to the application of a safer grant.
I come before you tonight to ask permission to apply for a safer grant for the fire department. Safer grant, safer actually happened in the state for staffing for kind of the fire emergency response. It's similar to the COPS program for staffing in the State Department. I'm asking permission to apply for a fire better position for a term of two years. There are no matching funds with this grant, so there's no obligation after the two-year term period for firefighters to retain the firefighting. I would hope that you would, but there's no requirement to do so. After the grant period or the performance period ends, also, you have the ability to apply for a retention grant to keep the position.
Okay.
I have questions too, but John can answer.
Okay. If it's only two years, why didn't resolutions say keep them for three? Type A?
There must be a type A.
Cross it out?
Cross it out.
With the third year committed by the fifth into the fund, the final year of local, out of local resources.
I haven't seen the resolutions.
Uh-huh. Who grew up?
I, I did.
Okay.
And as a typo, I called today specifically to ask about that third year and just told that after the two-year performance period is over, there is no further opportunities. That is my fault.
No, no problem, okay. Just because I read, read it and it kept on saying two, 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 and then the resolution for Wednesday says three, okay. Yep. This goes back to two thousand and thirteen before we took office and you made a presentation to, to you new council people to hire at that time, two new fire people.
Three.
Three, right. And we said no to all three and somehow you guys hired one, whatever. I'm in approval that we need new fire people to replace.
How many people retired, Kevin, in two thousand and fourteen?
In two thousand and fourteen, well, Captain Wery retired at the end of two thousand and fourteen, Ron Slender, and then they retired beginning of two thousand and fourteen.
And then what about this year?
So far, two thousand and fifteen, I have had no retirements.
Okay. Are you thinking anyone's gonna retire in two thousand and fifteen?
The department's relatively young.
If they did, you'd still have to rehire somebody according to the safer.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering, I, I'm just wondering, you're asking for five, so I'm figuring out what you've lost.
Part, well, the reason I'm asking for five specifically is to comply with the standards. The grant wants you to work towards the National Fire Protection Association seventeen ten standards, which requires four-person fire company. This would, this grant would allow us to staff each shift with twelve people. With one person always being on vacation per shift, we have twelve people, we have a lot more personnel on vacation at times, which technically takes up the whole year, which would leave us with eleven people available to work. It takes eleven people to staff two fire companies with four firefighters and one door commander as per the NFPA seventeen ten guidelines. That's why we asked for five. By complying with those guidelines, it increases your chances of being successful with the grant. If you don't, two-four NFPA seventeen ten guidelines, the grant committee that looks at these applications won't give it a high of a rate, assigned grade, so it might not be successful.
But we have, and Kevin, and believe me, I'm supportive of the fire department. I'm supportive of hiring two new firemen. I've been trying to get a budget committee because you guys have been telling me, John, we're spending more on overtime, it'd be cheaper to hire new firemen. So I'm trying to get that budget committee to confirm that and I believe, I believe to this point, we need two new firemen. I don't believe we need five new firemen. As far as guidelines, we probably have a guideline from someplace for the police department says we need a hundred and twenty police officers. And guess what? We're not gonna have a hundred and twenty police officers. As far as staffing, I recognize the guidelines for staffing, but it, it's not, it's not a negotiable item. It's something, right, it's something like, as much as like even right now, we're saying, if somebody calls out sick, you can call somebody in, but if we want to, we would say, no, don't even do that. But we're not looking to like put your men at jeopardy and put the city in jeopardy. And so we're still on a lean budget and we're still not to the position where like we can hire, in my estimation, five new firemen. And if somebody was to retire in the next two years, we would have to hire a six or a seven or an eight. It's not like we, we could not downsize because we hired these five new ones.
Oh, I get you, okay.
Right, you have to maintain that level to the end of this grant.
Okay.
So I'm all in favor of a minimum of two. I'm close to three, but I'm still waiting for that budget committee so we can have Mr. Guards explain to us where we stand. Now, obviously, if we got the safer grant, we'd be in a lot better shape.
Right.
So.
If you hire five, if we said yes to five for two years, but three permanently or two permanently, just hypothetically, we said yes to five for two years because most of the cost, well, well, let me ask my first question. The ineligible expenses in the hiring category, the training, the uniforms, the physical call, the overtime costs, what are those roughly, give or take?
It's hard to say, varies per firefighter, how long they, they've been there, what their, the rate is, but I can tell you that in two thousand and fourteen, we spent, as of two thousand, or I'm sorry, as of December seventeenth, we spent two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in overtime. In two thousand and fifteen, there's a contractual one point five percent raise and we're, we have one less person. So with the status quo, that, that overtime will grow considerably over three hundred thousand this year.
And what was budgeted?
So far, I had.
No, no, what was budgeted for two thousand and fourteen? That's what I'm trying to have this meeting with Ricky Guards, because if we budgeted two fifty, we spent two eighty, spending thirty thousand is better off than hiring two firefighters and benefits.
It was amended, the final figure was three hundred and thirty or something like that.
Well, right, right, that amendment would cover your actual expenditures. But, uh, no, and I believe we're at the point where we are price spending close to, if not more, in overtime than hiring new people. And that's why I say I'm very much in favor of bringing in some, the number five, just, I'm not, I'm not committed to that at this point, same reason I wasn't committed in May of two thousand and thirteen before I was even sworn in, where I said, why, Mr. City Manager, are you asking me, Amy and Marry to make this decision? You want to do this, have the sitting council put these people on? And we said no, and the people weren't put on, and you still don't have them. And I'm not saying that's right, but I mean, I know now with two more retirements, you are that much more shorthand. And the two people that I think should be hired immediately have already been, the turnout here has been bought for and everything.
And if you pay.
So.
What was actually hired at the first part?
Oh, really? Have we lost him out?
Well, maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
So if we did five for two years and then you have the option of then keeping a certain number of those, five, or you have to keep all five? Like, let's say five and two are outstanding, you wanna keep these two definitely, the other, after two years, the other three go.
You're under no obligation to keep them after the two years.
Right. But you're saying that we need officers, well, you're both saying that we need, we need, we need somebody past the two years, right? That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
Okay.
There will be a retirement in the next three years, but I can't say one either.
But those would not be people hired with this grant?
No.
Right.
There would be more people you would have to hire because I have to replace them. You have to hire them on top of the five.
Even if we hire, if we take these five, we still gotta backfill the two that have already retired before these two, before these five expire.
No, I don't think the two already retired, any future retirees.
Any future.
After we accept the grant, everybody retires, then you have to add those to the number.
To make it simple, the grant would bring us to fifty-one total uniform staff. You would have to maintain that fifty-one for two years. So you get the grant of work, you have a hundred and eighty days to hire the people. Once you do that, the clock starts ticking, you have twenty-four months, you have to maintain fifty-one people. Another benefit to having these extra people would, I don't have a crystal ball and I can't tell you what injuries are gonna, were gonna occur, but at, at three hundred thousand dollars in overtime, we would reduce that from fifty percent to two percent per year with the extra people. So that's something to think about also.
You could do what?
Well, if we're gonna spend three, like last year, we spent roughly three hundred thousand dollars in overtime. With the extra staffing, it would reduce greatly the amount of overtime. We would cut that three hundred thousand down to anywhere from a hundred fifty thousand to a hundred thousand conservative.
How, how can you say that, that you say without knowing injuries, right?
Well, I, like I said, I don't have a crystal ball and based on history, you would be able to have more people off of, off of work for whatever reason, vacation, sick time, injury, before you had to call overtime to back those positions. So there'd be a lot less overtime opportunities.
When does the, when does the safer grant start? What's the start date on it?
The deadline to file is March sixth and the federal government has mandated themselves that they have to do an answer by September thirtieth.
So if, how many people are gonna retire, do you think, in your, in your best estimation in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen?
One.
Okay.
I mean, as a conservative, that's, if things happen.
So then we would be, we would be potentially hiring people with the safer grant and then potentially one more? That's what I hear, is, am I, is that a correct, is that a fair statement to say?
That's a, that's a, that's a fair statement to make, but it's based on a guess, you know, based on how long people usually stay, the amount of years that the firefighters that are currently there have on the job. Nobody really stays past thirty years anymore and one firefighter will actually, will compete as thirty years this year.
So if we did two, that would make up for the two that retired? Or do you definitely have to have two?
If we did, if we.
Three that retire.
If we did, we did two safer and then hired down the road, we need more because somebody retired. Just because if we don't go for five and safer doesn't mean we can't hire more on our own. This hour's the same.
Yeah, what worries me about safer is then we have to keep it at, at five plus. We have to maintain that. That's where you're losing me on safer.
Or you would have to pay the money back.
Right, although.
It would be found money anyway, really.
Did I read someplace in here, the total grant for the entire state is only three hundred and forty thousand dollars?
No, I didn't see that.
Okay.
And have we had this grant before?
Yeah.
We had it before, but it was under extremely different grant rules. It was a five-year grant period. It was a match. We had to pay, they paid the lion's share the first year. They paid very little amount the fourth year and then you were required to keep those people for the.
Okay, that was my question is, do we keep the people?
Do you have one of these things?
Yes.
Go to the last page.
Very last page?
Yep. Total, total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars has been appropriate for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen for safer grants. That's for the entire state, country?
No, it's three hundred and forty million.
Three hundred and forty million, okay. Thank you, Kevin. Boy, I'm not the banker. Okay, that made me feel bad because I'm like, what the hell is three hundred and forty thousand dollars due for the state of New Jersey? Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just so I'm clear, you've had two retirements in two thousand and fourteen? Two or three?
I had two in the beginning of two thousand and fourteen.
Two in the beginning.
One at the end of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay, and do you have any other questions?
Yeah, how many have out on disability?
How many do you have out on disability?
Why?
I, can you clarify that for me? Do you mean how many people have retired on disability historically or how many people are injured right now?
That's due right now.
I don't have anybody out right now.
All right.
But, you know, it's I C F.
Okay.
That's your question.
You have one out, don't you?
Jason?
Uh, Jason was retired, he retired.
He retired, okay.
Any other questions for the chief?
You?
Okay. I'm available to follow up.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, he retired, though he's not out. That's what he, that's what we just asked.
Senator Dean, on your agenda, I have took a good discussion. All right, that, all right, at our last work session on February tenth, we had representatives from D E P, all right, make a presentation regarding the possibility of using the Fisherman's Lot for a staging area, all right, for work, replenishment work, all right, huge replenishment work on the northern, all right, northern areas, excuse me, north of Asbury Park. Want to open for discussion. All right, we've had, we've had several meetings now with D E P, all right, regarding our concerns, all right, with the use of Fisherman's Lot, all right, for the staging area. The last one we had was as late as last week, all right, where we had some major discussions with them regarding, all right, that usage. All right, right now, our, our primary question has been to them is why they aren't able to use, all right, staging areas further north, all right, Lock Harbor area, all right, Elveron area, Field Area. And they keep coming back to Asbury Park and saying is that this tends to be the most ideal site for them, all right, and the easiest site for them, all right, to move their equipment in and out.
Right. Well, I mean, I think everybody knows my opinion. Oh, well, um, you know, that's, that's not my problem. Though, the one thing I, I did meet with them about because I was interested was, was our, was the Fisherman's Lot so advantageous that it was worth something to them, whether it was money or funds or, or something to, to get in terms of the construction? And they were going to assess that and find out if it was so advantageous that it was worth some sort of money and get back to me. And they didn't get back to me, so. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty open, I'm a no, right?
No, I'm the same.
Oh, yeah, no.
D O A?
No need to discuss any further. All right, the next item on your agenda is appointments to boards, commissions and committees. All right, we currently have seven, all right, applications. All right, two for the housing authority, one for special events, all right, three for the code and quality of life, all right, committee, and one for the zoning boards.
Tony, I had two applications come in today. I've copied them and they're in front of council.
Yeah, I see five for code.
Does somebody hear something other than me?
What?
I don't know, I just hear a side voice. Let's see. Somebody else.
What else?
Are we, are we doing any?
What are we doing with this?
You wanna wait till Wednesday so you can go through the new ones too? No, that was to you, Ivan. I'm sorry. Um, do you wanna, cause a lot of them are for code and quality of life.
Yeah, I have a total of five for quality for code, quality of life. And they are Norman Roberts, Robinson, Michelle McGuire, Peter Siegel, David Ottley, and also Danny Weiss.
So the only thing I was gonna say, Fred, we were gonna do resolutions for parking quality, I think quality of life and sunset bridge committee.
Yes.
So we shouldn't appoint until we pass resolutions making those committees official, now?
Correct. I mean, you can talk about any of these applications this evening, otherwise you can defer this until Wednesday. We have three resolutions to create the three committees that you just indicated. And I will indicate that I had had some discussion with Eric Neiman, the gentleman counsel of the New Jersey Governmental Insurance Fund, about the issue of, do we have a formal resolution to establish these committees or not? Historically, on occasion, there hasn't been a resolution.
Historically, on the case, there hasn't been a resolution. And then there are some boards that are statutory, I think, that are referenced in the city code that are permanent. And Mr. Neeman indicated that it would be in the best interests of those who are serving on these informal advisory committees for you to have a resolution so that if in fact in the goodness of performance of their duties, they were, or in saying litigation or something like that, that the, it would be covered with the defense and indemnification by the New Jersey Governmental Insurance Fund as basically city officials. So I have these three resolutions that are on the agenda for Wednesday that would formally establish these committees and then you could, you know, free to make appointments.
And then like using, let's say, the Sunset, the Sunset Ave Committee, that would be a, a committee that ended, right? That would be a committee that ended.
It says right in the resolution itself, and I don't know that these three resolutions have gone empty yet because we're still working on the related Friday.
Okay.
Um, this one says right in it that the life of it will, it will expire at the end of the project, construction.
Great.
Um, Fred, one other question. Also says that they, that they will end, um, end at the end of the year. Can they be extended?
Absolutely.
Do they, do you have to have a second resolution to extend it?
No.
Or can we at this point say, uh, let it run for two years?
The terms would, in the way it's gonna be written, and of course, this is subject to your discretion. You can appoint people for as long as you wish, like one-year terms or multi-year terms. Uh, but this way, if you were to go with one-year terms, that every January, it would continue to either reappoint or appoint the people to boards and commissions. I mean, there are certain requirements for the statutory boards. These are more informal advisory committees and their, their terms can be as long as you wish. So you can have longer terms, shorter terms. I just thought this way you could have a house cleaning and a January reappointment, state advisory committees, get new jeans, maybe we should continue.
Thanks, Fred.
And for the questions?
On that?
On that. Senator Dean, review of the agenda items for your February twenty-fifth regular meeting.
With the codes.
End question regarding the regular meeting.
I love this council because everybody read something and everybody picked up on something because we all talked amongst ourselves and everything. There's three different resolutions to hire three different Ford Explorers at three different prices. And like, number one, don't know why we're buying such big cars and why the most expensive one for twenty-nine thousand dollars would be going to code. And why one which I can definitely see the fire department need in a Ford Explorer because it's four-wheel drive, he needs turnout gear and everything for the fire department, I have no problem. How's that five thousand dollars cheaper than the one for code? I mean, the one for code got a moon roof and leather seats and air conditioning. But I mean, well, well, the one for code is twenty-nine thousand, the one for fires twenty-five thousand, the one for social services is twenty-three thousand. So how the hell can we buy three different vehicles from the same vendor at three different prices?
And more importantly, Tony, I don't know, like, social services is doing a, like, why do you need a Ford truck? Why can't you just, you know, I have a Hyundai. Why can't you drive a Hyundai? I mean, other than fire, I'm not sure why anyone needs a truck.
Because we were looking at the Ford Explorer, the Formula Five because of climate weather, all right, because social services is out there, all right, doing, all right, parts of emergency management, all right, transportation, all right, to, to and from shelters, all right, going out by vehicle and outreach. All right, so they're out there in the, in the elements.
All right, even if you could argue social services, and really I would wanna spend some time thinking about that, to John's point, why does code need a, need a truck? Why can't they just use a car?
I wasn't aware that code was buying an Explorer. I had to be ordering for code prior to Mr. McInnes being here and I ordered two Ford Focuses. All right, so that's my understanding, so I'm looking to see, all right, what the third Ford Explorer is. Because as we left it, we ordered two Ford Focuses. You know, one was because of the car accident, both from the accident. And then we're with Ford, so.
I know these all came from finance. I don't know if Mr. Garis is going to be at the meeting on Wednesday, but I'm sure he can comment.
He does have to be at the meeting, we're gonna vote no on him.
And I know that they're all state contract.
That's all I have on the agenda.
Anyone else have anything on the agenda? Next item on your work session is the public portion.
Okay. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three limit, three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner and interrogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and after an appropriate warning may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Anybody that would be heard?
I'm glad you mentioned those SUVs or whatever the gas guzzlers. Uh, I, I'm sure if you looked into other towns, they all got smaller vehicles. I mean, we just go continue the same thing over and over. Why do we need, uh, for code, why do we need that? Why do we need one for social services? Why don't they use their own cars and pay them for their gas? This is only one little mile. We don't need all these vehicles running around, including the fire department. They don't, they have no place to park. They got so many vehicles. I mean, like, really? How about, and I don't care if it's a state thing, Fred, we still, do we, do we not have to pay for them?
No, absolutely. The city will have to pay for them. State contract, we just examine it because it's gone through a process where they have to qualify.
And I, I thought I saw at home that we're gonna get two new ambulances too. I didn't see it here.
Yes, it's on the agenda for Wednesday night and they're, they're, they're definitely needed.
But wait a minute, there's nothing in those things. I had to call Monarch for my husband because he needed oxygen. When you get an ambulance from here, there's nothing in it. It's just transportation.
I disagree with that, Rita.
Well, what else do they do? They don't have anything on those trucks. I've been on them twice.
Well, maybe that's why we're getting new ones so it has the stuff in them, but, uh.
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, like, there's, there, there is a group called Monarch and they're, they're fully equipped. They have EKGs, they have oxygen, they have everything that you need.
And I believe our.
Huh?
Our, I believe our fire department EMTs have the same exact equipment, if not better.
I'm not saying anything bad about it, but there's nothing in the vehicle. Look at it. I mean, like, I've been in it twice. There's nothing in it. They're very good and everything. They just transport you over there. And if you had a store like I did on Kingsley Street, that, that ambulance is there like twenty times a day to transport people. And, you know, I mean, like, they do, do that. I'm not saying they're not, but I don't understand why they don't have oxygen and they don't have an EKG on their, on your way to the hospital. I mean.
Let me, let me interject here because I see the chief's, you know, chomping at the bit to allow me to answer.
All right, wait a minute. I just, I wanna say something about code. I think that, in all due respects, I don't know his name, I think he's trying to build a big empire for himself. I don't think we need all that. We can't even get a dumpster removed on Sixth Avenue and there's an ordinance against it. So, I mean, like, and then on Springwood Avenue, there's been a house there for about thirty or forty years, right next to Eva Peak's house, on Ridge and, and Springwood. That place is a mess. It's been there all these years. I don't know. Maybe somebody knows a friend or something. But I mean, like, how are you building this empire and it's gonna be very costly besides? I don't know if that woman's getting paid tonight, but.
No, no, she was a volunteer.
Oh, she was a volunteer, good. Does the fire chief wanna say something to me?
I think a couple of us wanna say something, it was like. First of all, personal issues with the social services vehicle. All right, we do a lot of transporting of clients and residents. All right, using our personal vehicles is prohibited because of liability issues. The second issue as far as code enforcement goes, all right, I'll address that by saying is that it's not a question of building an empire here. It's a question of, all right, getting our house in order. All right, we're finding that we have numerous problems that have to be addressed, all right, and we are trying, all right, with the limited staff that we have to do our best. All right, we've had a couple of, we've had one resignation with code enforcement. We've had one retirement with code enforcement. What's basically happened here is that we, all right, brought two people back from labor, all right, to bring us back up to, all right, our normal numbers, all right, for code enforcement. In far as what you heard tonight, all right, with the abandoned properties ordinance, I personally believe that it's a good thing for Asbury Park. It's a way by which, all right, we're going to be able to hold landlords accountable, particularly absentee landlords. All right, none of us like going from, all right, street to street and seeing abandoned properties, all right, in Asbury Park. All right, it's a problem for, all right, our quality of life. All right, so it's not going to be something where you're going to find where the city is going to be shelling out a lot of money. All right, again, this is going to be something that we're going to be using to, all right, hold landlords accountable.
All right, Rita, Rita, nope, you're done. Do you wanna respond?
I was gonna.
I just wanted to point out, Rita, that we do carry oxygen on the angles. Uh, we carry epinephrine for ocular reactions. Uh, we carry semi-automatic refrigerators for heart, cardiac events. We carry Narcan for to counter, uh, at the, uh, the effects of opiate overdoses. One hundred percent of the firefighters in Asbury Park, including myself, are New Jersey state certified emergency medical technicians, one hundred percent. We're the only fire department in the state that can vote that, so we're very proud of them. And as far as Monarch goes, um, they're unavailable to us fifty to seventy percent of the time. They're just not available to respond at this point. So I'm very proud of the service. I just wanted, want you to be aware, you know.
Well, I'm talking about six years ago. Maybe you've gotten that since then. But, yeah, I didn't see anything. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next.
Um, I want to address the chief. You know, my mother had congestive heart failure and she must have gone to the hospital seven or eight times. And I must say, the fire department in Asbury Park was on the ball. Whenever they came to the house, they said, hello, Mrs. Des, they knew her, you know, by her name, and they took care of it. One time, in fact, it was the last time, I don't know why I said it, but I, when I made the call, I said, don't send that other thing. And I don't even know why I said it. I have no idea. But they sent Monarch and they came and they, you know, they were giving us a hard time. So then your men came over, no, your men came first. And they said, we have to wait for Monarch. Why they said that, I have no idea, okay? It was raining, seven o'clock in the morning, and all I knew is that the fire department kept saying, we gotta get her out of here. She's in trouble. We have to get her there. Monarch, I don't know, I don't know why we even had them. I really don't. Well, needless to say, that was the day. So, I mean, but as far as Asbury Park Fire Department goes, on the ball with my mom. But that was the one time Monarch stepped in, end of the day. So, thanks anyway.
Thank you, Louise.
Ma'am, could you please state your name for the record?
It's Louise Murray.
Warner? If I were gonna bang the gavel, I'm gonna start.
Okay, I'll take her time. No, can't do that. Uh, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Uh, I wanna make some comments about the proposal for the abandoned and vacant properties. I read the documentation that was part of the package. There's a couple of things in here. I'm, I'm gonna be the, the contrarian voice, unfortunately. Maybe the voice of conscience on some of this. I'm reading some of this. And you had asked, somebody had asked about this requirement for someone to register their own property as vacant must provide insurance. Now, think about that. Insurance is only required by a mortgage company to cover their interest in the property because they loaned the property owner money. Now, to compel somebody to buy three hundred thousand dollars minimum of insurance on a vacant property that they're compelled to report themselves or face a one thousand dollar fine seems draconian. You know, I thought New Jersey, um, well, I think New Jersey already has a reputation of big government. And it just seems to me like you're trying to make government bigger and bigger and more intrusive. The other thing here that nobody picked up on is the signage requirement. There's a requirement here for a vacant property for someone to post a sign declaring effectively that, hey, this property's vacant. You're trying to keep people from breaking into places and vandalizing them, let your, like, you're compelling someone to post the property as being fair game. Come on over and vandalize me. You need to think this through a little bit, I think. I understand the intent to address vacant, abandoned properties, okay? It's a noble goal. But I think some of the procedures in here are far too onerous on property owners. Face it, if somebody can't afford to like open up their property and renovate it and, and make it viable, what makes you think they're gonna report themselves and pay a thousand dollar registration fee? I just robbed the candy store. Oh, well, let me go over there and tell them I just took the candy, right? It, it's not likely to work out too well. So I think you really need to read through this and put yourself on the other side. The other issue is, this is like the hammer approach. I'd like to see a more of a hands-up approach. It's my understanding that there are community development funds available. Why isn't somebody from the city being actively out there, offering assistance to people that have problems with community development funding? That would get a, a sugar approach out there instead of the hammer approach. Now, sure, some people need the hammer, okay, but some people also need just a hand up. So I think you need to do these things in parallel with each other. Thanks.
Thank you. And it's not gonna be introduced at the next meeting, uh, that, Wednesday night, but it's the following meeting, so it gives us plenty of time to review that and there will be a first and a second, you know, hearing, which you can ask more questions, but I appreciate your input. As far as like positive programs that there, there are, there's the RCA program that, you know, we are gonna re-advertise in a more friendly way because right now people read the word lean and they're scared to death they're not applying for the money. So we're, we're looking at both.
The only thing I would say is if people are paying their taxes religiously, if they're paying their taxes religiously, what that says to me is they're sitting on a property. They're just sitting on it, right? They're not so down and out they can't pay their taxes. They're sitting on a property, um, more than likely until they can sell it.
Motion to close with public?
Move it second, second.
All in favor?
All right.
I just had a reminder, um, and I'm just thinking of it now, so if Ricky's gonna be here on Wednesday, there was an issue of, um, like, something concerning the MOU that we had addressed a while ago and I just wanted to remind him to. If, is he gonna be here or?
I had a discussion with Ricky, all right, earlier regarding the MOU.
Okay, so we're gonna.
About the, the camera?
No.
No.
The position letter as far as he was supposed to write.
Nonprofit donations. All right, that's all I had.
Anybody else?
Just two brief comments. I just wanna say to the fire department, my husband was very ill for over a year. Every time we needed somebody, they came, they took care of him. And because of their attention, he survived as long as he did and I wanted to say thank you. Second, as far as the abandoned houses, I have watched houses burned that were abandoned and families lose everything because someone else was negligent. And those people who didn't have insurance were penalized. Not, not the homeowners that didn't have the insurance, but the homeowners who lost everything because their neighbors were not fair and didn't care. I, I am very in favor of taking care of abandoned houses and going after those people who own them. So I wanna say thank you for preparing this. I know we have to look at it and tweak it, but this is something that this city needs. It needs it very badly. Thank you.
I got a really quick thing and I already emailed. I got a really quick thing, and I already emailed Joe. He said he was going to have Manny look at it. The boardwalk lights off on the North End Beach are out. One of the, two of the seniors in the towers are emailing me about it. I emailed him this weekend. He said he'd have someone look at it today.
I saw the email.
Yeah, can you have somebody look at it tomorrow?
Jason? I'm going to wait till Wednesday. Thank you. Nothing tonight. Yeah. Kevin, do me a favor, because I don't have a clue either. What is, okay, I know what Monarch is, but who decides who comes to my house, Monarch or Asbury Park? I mean, and why are they in Asbury if we have a paid fire department?
It's a two-tiered system, and it's strange. New Jersey is the, it's different than only 49 other states.
I believe that.
In New Jersey, and it, like everything else, and this is my opinion, it's always about money. It's about money. It's very lucrative. Even though Monarch is nonprofit, it's a very lucrative business. Monarch is an acronym for Mammoth, Ocean, Mammoth County, Oklahoma County Hospital Corporation. They provide advanced life support for paramedics. They administer a whole range of drugs, over 800 hours a day for paramedics. The emergency medical, like, we are in Asbury Park, it's about 200 hours long. You call 911, whoever you call, a certified public patient, emergency medical dispatch as a requirement, be able to staff a 911 center. Based on the information you give them, they'll determine whether it's a need for a advanced life support, and they'll dispatch Monarch. We're going to come anyway, because we're, we're on scene usually anywhere from two to four minutes, we can be on scene. As I said, Monarch, although it's a nonprofit, they do have to balance their books, and they're stretched very, very thin. The unit that comes out of there to shore is supposed to, a very, a very, very busy unit. They can't feed us any place in Asbury Park anyway, unless we're stacked up, more calls going at the same time, half a period on it. But if there are another call, they'll send a unit from Long Island, they even send units from Freehold. Why, I don't know. It's not my concern. I don't have any authority over this. But that's how, how it happens. That's kind of determination to me.
Let them finish, let them finish.
Now, when we get on scene, we can cancel. Now, that's a personal choice by the, the firefighters that are on scene, you know, they're, they're making a determination whether they want to cancel advanced life support or not. Most of my guys carry the phone, some guys are very wheezy, kind of like, a little anxious, but most of the time, we're kind of, we need angles, we have a hospital before they get their label. It's, it's an issue, because we're so fast, Monarch can't bill.
You guys get on the scene, doesn't mean you have to wait for Monarch.
Absolutely not, absolutely not, we do not.
That was, that was a little bit of an issue, but I have something to say about Monarch. My mother had an issue, she was in Ocean Township, she was 18, she was a sister-in-law to my mother. I was taking her on the stretcher to put her in there, there at the park. They said, somebody says, "What's plants? Is that her medication?" And my sister-in-law says, "No, that's her name." I mean, not, not much on Monarch, but it's a little shady, I'll tell you right now.
Well, I also want to say that, please don't judge the paramedics in Monarch, if they don't come to the person who paid people. They work the streets, and most of them are very little when they do. It's just I have a little bit of issue with the company itself. The people that work the streets are all good, they're people that they're really proud of, they...
Thank you, chief. Tony?
Any other matters?
Yep, you.
I, I have one. Several times this evening, we've heard about the budget meeting. The council, all right, people who are involved in the budget committee available Monday evening to meet. I spoke with Ricky Garz earlier this evening. He's anxious about getting the process started this month.
That's Monday evening?
That's Monday evening.
As long as I'm not in court? Yeah. Schedule for...
Yeah, I have an AP-TV. What time are you meeting with? Can you do, can I do like 5:30 to 6:30?
Yeah.
5:30, sure.
5:30.
5:30. Yep.
So I have...
Dr. Fred?
Worship to adjourn?
Move it.
All in favor?